I'm calling the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee meeting to order at 5:30. I appreciate everyone's patience as we work to utilize technology this evening to practice responsible social distance in light of these unprecedented times. That being said, this meeting is currently being recorded and will be available for all on our district website at a later date.
Yes.
Yes.
Although there's a very strange clicking noise.
Yes.
Okay, so we have everybody in attendance. After having an opening ceremony tonight. A secretary's report. So in your packet, I apologize. Got two computers going.
Did that stop the clicking noise?
Yes, thank you very much.
Oh my God.
Were you tapping or?
No, I was, I had my earbuds plugged in using the mic from my phone and don't know why it might be doing, might have been doing that, but I unplugged it and it seems to have stopped.
Yes, sort of, it's back.
Oh boy.
I think it's got something to do with my, my headset too, because every time I mute it's I take that back, I muted and it didn't change. I don't know.
Oh, could be.
Okay, so in your packet, you should have meeting minutes dated March 3rd, 2020. I would entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
I'm gonna do roll call voting. Or actually, are there any questions or issues with the minute, meeting minutes? Okay, we'll vote on accepting those meeting minutes. And I call your name, please respond with yes, no, or you're abstaining. So Pam.
Yes.
Delcie.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
And Jeff is yes. Okay, warrant articles were emailed. I know folks have been trying to sign them and turn them back into the office. Appreciate everybody's support of trying to get that done. Any correspondence, Superintendent Willard?
We are getting correspondence. We're expecting in the next few days. I will be sharing it our next time together. We're just working closely right now with the Commissioner of Education and Governor Baker on next steps during the COVID outbreak.
And we also had a letter, didn't we? From Granville? Ton.
Granville. I think that's going to FinCom. I think Steve, what, do you want to answer that, Steve?
Well, it's, it was directed to the school committee, so we intend to craft a response for your review. I don't know how you want to handle, handle that review. The letter doesn't preclude you from doing anything right now with respect to either the outsourcing of transportation issue or the school budget adoption, but they are looking for some additional information which may help them in their their analysis and whether they choose to support or endorse our operating budget for fiscal year 21 or not. It's really not so much endorsing the budget, but deciding to support the underlying assessment that would be passed on to the town of Granville.
So Steve, after I met with you, it appears that I might be able to answer some of these questions. Are you going to answer these questions in writing? Would you like me to reach out to the Granville Finance Committee or both?
Well Pam, since the letter was directed to the committee, I guess you, you folks can direct us however, however you'd like, whether it's, and I was originally thinking and in a response in writing, some of that, you know, just providing further breakdown for this cost, it's probably going to be tough to, to do, to do that maybe 100% effectively through a verbal conversation.
Yes, when, you know, when you and I discussed some of this, you did a nice job showing me some of the breakdown and the line item transfers and, and the reasons behind, you know, not comparing apples to oranges sort of thing. So I would appreciate that if you could do that for the finance committee as well.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, moving on, it's time for our first public comment. Members of the public viewing online may make comments electronically through the live stream platform. Comments will be read aloud at the meeting if the commenting individuals provide their name and address. Public comments, including electronic comments, are not part of any Q and A, nor will there be any back and forth responding from the school board. If you access us through the live stream, you can also send an email to superintendent@stgrsd.org and we will be monitoring that account throughout the public comment and the meeting. We have a second public comment section at the end as well. So it's time for our first public comment. We give everybody one more minute just in case.
Are attendees able to raise their hands? I cannot see the attendee list.
Go to panelists, Pam. Participants.
I can only view the panelists. I am unable to view attendees. Oh, wait a minute, I take that back. I am available to, oh, it looks like we have a hand in the air.
Awesome.
Oh, it looks like we no longer have Elaine.
I don't know if I am, are you here?
Yes, you can.
Okay. My name is Elaine Wisig. I live at four West Heartland Road in Granville. And I really do not have a comment or a question. I was misunderstanding when you indicated you could not see community members that were trying to hear the proceedings. So I'm really interested at this point in simply listening to the proceedings.
Okay, so then the raised hand was an electronic signal. We thought that you were interested in making a statement. So if you are simply interested in listening, but would like to make a statement later, then in our second public comment, you could indicate that by indicating raised hand.
Okay, thank you. That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
All right, I learned something.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, tonight we do not have any student advisory reports. And we do not have any educational presentations, nor do we have policies. So we're moving on to the action items section.
Hey, this is Superintendent Jen Willard, and I'm making a motion to approve the transfer.
Hold on one second. Sorry, you got ahead of me. This evening we'll be doing slightly different than normal. Once articles are read by the superintendent, motioned and seconded by the committee, then I open the floor to the committee for discussion or committee questions. I'll then ask each of you one at a time for your comments or questions to avoid us talking over each other. Once all the discussion is exhausted, you will complete a roll call vote. I'll then call each of you up, individual, whether you will respond yes, no, or abstain. And then I will respond whether or not the action is passed or failed. Sorry Jen, didn't want to cut you off.
That's okay. I know Steve has something that he would like to share after I make the motion.
Okay.
So I'm making a motion to approve the transfer of school transportation services to the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative effective July 1st, 2020, subject to successful negotiation with the collaborative and the Transportation Association recommended.
So moved.
Second, is that me?
Yep.
Sorry guys.
Yes, okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't quite hear you, Jen. So I, I did want to make some, I have some prepared remarks. It's kind of weird right now. I'm reading, I'm, I'm doing this into my cellphone because my computer doesn't have a working microphone. So if you could just bear with me. The, this has been kind of a very challenging process. We've talked about it at many of the previous meetings. I just wanted to kind of summarize some of this and make some points as you get ready to take a rather important vote. The idea to look into the option of outsourcing student transportation services was not something that was initiated by myself or the superintendent or anyone else within district administration. This was more of an initiative of the school committee. Southwick Town and Granville Regional is, is part of a truly minute minority of public school districts across the Commonwealth that own and operate their own fleet of school transportation vehicles. Aside from STG RSD in Western Mass, only Pittsfield and Munson still use the self-op model for regular ed transportation. Some districts, again, a distinct minority, use their own vehicles and employees to transport special ed students within district and to out of district placements. I'd like to unequivocally state that for decades, the management, drivers and monitors of the STG RSD Transportation Department have loyally and proudly carried on the tradition of being one of the few remaining self-operated programs in the state. And for that, we should all be very thankful for their service. That said, the challenges of running a relatively small standalone school transportation program have been and continue to be many and varied. And thus, due to the school committee, asked us to examine whether outsourcing could work financially and operationally for this district. And that is what we set out to do last fall. In considering the outsourcing option, STG RSD was in a unique position by being a member of the LPVEC or the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. We are in fact the only district within LPVEC that does not use its transportation services. As a collaborative member, STG RSD has seats on the governing boards and is essentially a stakeholder in the organization. Since we have the stakeholder status with LPVEC and because all of the other member districts use its transportation services and ongoing concerns exist over the volatility of privately owned school transportation operator contracts, we limited our analysis to evaluating the LPVEC option. The analysis we performed relied on assistance and guidance from a variety of individuals and organizations. LPVEC management, DESI Associate Commissioner Jay Sullivan, DOR Director of Accounts Mary Jane Handy, our financial advisor Lynn, Lynn Welsh at Unibank Financial Advisory Services, and even Bond Counsel Rick Manley at, at Lock and Lord. The essence of our analysis is that by creating a multi-year revenue stream from the disposition of the existing transportation assets and the avoidance of certain otherwise necessary capital costs, including new vehicles, underground storage tank replacement, parking lot resurfacing, the financial implications of outsourcing transportation, in my opinion, could best be labeled as neutral for the foreseeable future. This neutral financial picture accounts for all direct and indirect costs associated with our self-operated program. Swings of operational and capital costs by just a percent or two for either LPVEC or STG RSD could change that neutral position. But such changes are impossible to predict with any certainty. Our one advantage of the outsourcing model is that once a daily bus rate for a school or fiscal year is established by LPVEC, the rate is not subject to modification. So many of the expense blips, for example, expensive vehicle repairs or personnel and benefits issues that we invariably see in the course of operating our own transportation department would be eliminated. So for the foreseeable future, there's no reason to expect that outsourcing transportation would negatively impact education staffing any greater than remaining as a self-operated program would. Nor do we think it would result in increased assessments to the three member towns. Because of the unique geographical nature of our district, LPVEC has committed to mirroring our existing operation as closely as possible for the upcoming 2021 school year. This, of course, is subject to the annual adjustments that we would normally make to account for student movement within the district and between schools and sometimes for, even on the availability of drivers. We're all subject to that, that shortage. For years beyond 2021, STG RSD could still play as large a role as desired in route design and scheduling. Admittedly, if you vote to outsource transportation to LPVEC, there is still a fair amount of work to do to make that into a reality. The response to the COVID-19 pandemic has required a shift in focus and resources that no one could have reasonably anticipated. The remaining work includes negotiation of a sublease allowing LPVEC to use the existing transportation facility on our campus, vehicle purchase and sale agreements, and lease purchase agreements for the, for remaining vehicles. Union negotiations would also be required to address specifics involved in moving employees from one contract to another. While, while time is becoming tight, these tasks are not insurmountable and should be achievable before a proposed July 1 transition. And that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so we're gonna open the floor for discussion and questions. Pam is up first.
Okay, well, first of all, I would like to thank Steve for that statement. And I also myself had prepared a written statement. So I'm going to go ahead and read mine if that is okay. I understand and support the motives and benefits associated with transportation outsourcing. However, I have also heard and understand the community's concerns. These concerns, which are more than just perceived, stem from lack of information, unease about the speed with which events have unfolded, and uncertainty about the future. As parents and taxpayers, I believe that the community members should have the opportunity to ask questions and obtain answers prior to voting on the budget at town meeting. I know that this will be very difficult in our current circumstances, but I am requesting that the administration and committee find a way to make this possible. And side note, this, the information that Steve just presented to us and read to us, if that could be made public in some way, I think would help the current situation. The decision regarding transportation, however, is a school committee decision. Therefore, I have spoken to multiple stakeholders and very carefully weighed all aspects of this issue as best I can. In the end, I do believe that the benefits outweigh the concerns. As I see it, the greatest benefit is time. Consider a homeowner who chooses to outsource their lawn and property maintenance. This is not necessarily to save money, but rather to save time so that one's focus and energies can be directed towards other priorities. In this case, priorities that more directly affect the education of our students. Of course, the financial impact of this decision must also be carefully considered. Initially, outsourcing our transportation will save us money due to the sale and lease of our buses, but the long-term impacts are admittedly difficult to predict. Steve did a really great job explaining just now how in his best estimate in the long term, we would end up financially neutral. And I, I think that I defer to Steve and his assessment of that. I appreciate his comments. I do want to point out that initially outsourcing transportation would also result in some significant cost avoidances, help stabilize the budget, and in my opinion, most importantly, allow our administrators to redirect this time and energies toward educational priorities that more directly impact our students. In the end, I believe that outsourcing our transportation is inevitable and most fiscally and educationally responsibly, the correct decision.
Pam, thank you for your statement. Do you have any further questions on the action item?
I do not.
Moving on to Chelsea.
I do not have a statement prepared, but I do have just a couple lingering questions, and I think they might have been asked before, but I just wanted to hear them again. I'm thinking about how the daily bus rate is established, it's set, what about, so that we can know what to expect at the beginning of the year, which is a great advantage. What about the field trips and sports? How does that get factored in?
So those costs are in addition to the daily rate that's assessed on a monthly basis for transportation. It would come as a monthly charge. We've identified those, those likely costs in the FY '21 operating budget. Some of those things were broken out to one degree or another in the current operating budget and how we've been tracking things in the past. Others not so clearly. So moving to the collaborative scenario kind of forced us to, to take a look at what we thought the expenses would be for athletic trips, for field trips that wouldn't be covered by student fees through student activity, some of the special ed trips that go out for groups of students in, in various ed programs. And so we've quantified those and captured those in the, and accounted for those in the FY '21 operating budget. Over time, we'll probably get better at predicting what that cost is, but I think we have the resources in place to adequately cover that for FY '21.
When we see that the general athletic trips line is $20,000 for fiscal year 2020, and then it goes down to zero for 2021, that $20,000 athletic trip is already factored into the proposed?
Actually, it'd be the other way around, so just switching over to the budget document. So are you in the general admin budget, Chelsea?
It's under maintenance.
Okay, well, so actually there's a line in the, in the Southwick Regional School budget. Now, it's a, it's a new line that wasn't there in previous years. It's on page six of the SRS budget under athletics. And so that, under FY '20, there's a zero in that figure, and actual, under FY '19, a zero as well. And in FY '21, we've, we've got $20,000 in that, in that line. So we've, we've shifted where we're accounting for that, from the general admin transportation budget to the Southwick Regional School athletic budget.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Sorry for that confusion.
No, that's okay. I could have asked earlier too, but they jump out at me at different times. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions, Chelsea?
No, not right now.
Ted, do you have any questions?
No.
Jess, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Steve. That was very helpful for that financial perspective. From a parent's point of view, I think where the concern is coming from, at least for myself, is around the loss of control that the district will then have with outsourcing. And I know along the way that we were working with the collaborative to try and minimize any change in the student's experience when we outsourced. Did we get to that point in our discussions with the collaborative?
Well, it's, it's definitely been discussed with the collaborative. I think the, the one point I would make is that it's, it's highly likely that students who have a particular bus driver right now and have a, have a relationship with that bus driver, if they're remaining in that same school next year and they're not moving up to another school, chances are better than 50/50 that they would still have that bus driver. have that bus driver. Uh, we can't make guarantees on that, uh, because it does involve employees', uh, willingness to transition to a new employer. And every year, employees have some opportunity to move around within, to change routes. So while I'd love to, to guarantee that nothing changes with staffing, uh, it's just a promise I can't make in this transition, I wouldn't be able to make that, that commitment or that promise even if we were remaining as a self-operated transportation program. Um, the, the, the plan presently is for the collaborative to retain all of the administrative and management personnel, um, with their operation. Uh, they use the same routing and planning software, they've made, um, numerous verbal commitments to essentially defer to us and, and, uh, really, we've got, we've had to do some very creative things to make, uh, route times work and to accommodate all of the families wherever they live in the district, and the collaborative, uh, recognizes that. Uh, I think Jen, you could feel free to chime in on, on this topic, but, uh, so far...
Yes, and we also have Anna Bishop from the collaborative, um, as one of our attendees as well.
Right, I wondered if this would be a good time for Anna to, um, to, to chime in? Is that possible?
Yes.
Amy, can you, uh, move her over to the panelists?
Yes, I'm working on that. For some reason, it's not... It's not, let me allow it to talk.
Oh, you just had it.
Hello?
Hi, Anna.
I, I am here, good evening.
This is Anna Bishop. Anna, you wanna?
It is.
You wanna tell everybody, um, just, uh, who you are and what your title is at the collaborative, just for our school committee members and the attendees that are listening in?
Certainly, so my name's Anna Bishop, um, I actually live in Southwick, and I am currently the Director of Finance and Operations at the collaborative, and also the, um, interim co-executive director for the collaborative. So I have been, uh, listening to the, um, comments and concerns, um, so I can assure you, um, we've been in several discussions with, with Jen and Steve and our committee, um, regarding the outsourcing of transportation for Southwick, Talon, and Granville. Um, so as we have, um, discussed, everything is to remain status quo. So we are looking to hire all of your employees, um, including, um, management and, and the mechanic, um, and we are looking to remain status quo. So as Steve mentioned, obviously, some of the employees may not want to transition over to a new employer, and we did experience that, um, at, in 2019, when we actually took over Eflam Meadows Transportation. Um, and I believe PM, you've had some conversations with our board chair, uh, Mr. Bill Fonseca, who is also the, uh, representative for Eflam Meadows. Um, so they were very pleased and very happy with the transition, it was a very smooth transition. Of course, some employees did elect not to come over to LPBC, and they either moved on or retired, but what I can assure you is we are looking for status quo, um, and I hear your concerns as far as loss of control, because that was definitely something that Eflam Meadows experienced also. So being part of the collaborative, um, we are an extension of, of your school district, and so we work very closely with Steve and, and Jen and, um, and PM to, um, provide the best service that we possibly can. So we are not looking to obviously upset any parents or make any large transitions or changes. Um, so from our perspective, um, I think it would definitely be beneficial for Southwick, Talon, and Granville to outsource transportation, and one of the other things I would like you to keep in mind, you are one-seventh of, you own, as, as a member of the collaborative, Southwick, Talon, and Granville owns one-seventh of all of our assets. Um, so you have, you are a stakeholder in the collaborative, so we hear what you have to say, we actually, um, obtain guidance from the superintendent, from the business managers, and so our operation is all customer service-based, um, and so we basically, um, follow, our, our guidelines are based on what we hear from our superintendents in our districts.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So it sounds like from an interaction perspective, what our students and parents are used to receiving, whether that's letters, or signing up for transportation, or how drivers are transitioned, all of those hot procedures will remain essentially intact, or very similarly or potentially improved, is that accurate?
That is accurate. Uh, one of the other things that I did want to touch upon is, you know, as far as the employees and their, their salaries and their benefits, um, we actually, our benefits are actually a little bit better than, uh, Southwick, Talon, and Granville. Um, our, our health insurance is a 70/30 split, um, as opposed to the 50/50 split, and they will, as far as their salaries, they will be coming over basically status quo, as a matter of fact, we are sliding them into our salary scale, which is a little bit higher than where they would be next year.
Thank you. And then with regards to just, I have one financial question. Steve, we had thought there might be some economies of scale with this, um, with regards to your outlook being neutral from a financial perspective, do the economies of scale somewhat offset some of those benefit and salary changes? Is that why we're thinking the move would be neutral from a financial perspective?
Well, the, the reason I classify it as, as neutral is, um, you know, we, we have a revenue stream that is, um, basically makes it, um, slightly less costly to outsource with the collaborative in FY '21. I think that changes in FY '22 ever so slightly, and then, um, the cost avoidance factor puts us back into a, a, um, a less costly arrangement as, as outsourced. The economies of scale, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm losing you on specifically what you mean by that, Jess.
Um, purchasing fuel, um, purchasing parts...
Oh, okay.
Uh, all of the things along the way that we only purchase a few at a time.
So, so those are potential, um, economies of scale that the collaborative takes advantage of and, and utilizes those economies in developing daily rates for their, the, uh, the member districts that are using their transportation service. So I, I, I'm not that far into Anna's weeds there, as far as how, um, you know, how, how those numbers stack up versus what we're spending on, on certain, uh, parts and supplies. We do go through competitive procurement to the extent that we can with, with those things and as required by, by regula, regulation, um, but I don't, it would be difficult for me to, to make a comparison with the collaborative and whether that, that's where, you know, whether there are significant savings associated with that.
Okay, thank you. And just for a statement, completely understand that personnel could change, um, just as it would if we kept it in-house.
Correct, yep.
Back to you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Jonathan, do you have any questions?
I think, I think everything's been covered, I just, overall, I see a, a much stronger list on the pro side of, of doing this, and, and I apologize, I can't remember the, the lady that was, that was giving us the explanation, but I really appreciate you being able to, to, to give us that, uh, that additional information. I don't know if it helps with what, uh, what Pam was asking earlier, if there's some, some correspondence that could be done there, I think that alleviated some, some things to hear from someone that was, is directly, you know, involved, as obviously we, you know, the school committee has a, a piece of the, of the collaborative. But like I said, overall, I, I just see this as a, a, a chance for us to once again target our, our focus more towards education and, and less about being a, a transportation company, so, um, with that, I'm, I'm all set.
Hey, Maria, do you have any questions?
Um, I do not have any questions, I just want to say thank you to Steve for that, um, the explanation, and, um, to, uh, the representative from the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative, um, thank you for your time. Um, I know we are gonna be stronger, um, a stronger unit after this, and I know our kids are gonna be well taken care of, because never mind being in the business of transporting the children from point A to point B, they are all caring for the lives of those students, so they'll be able to make those connections, they'll be able to get to know the students if they're new drivers. So I do not have any hesitation with this move, thank you.
Okay, I do not have any questions at this time, I just wanted to say thank you to the Transportation Subcommittee, uh, to Steve and Jen for your work on this, and as well, uh, Anna as well from the collaborative. I thank you all for your time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we're gonna do a roll call vote, and we'll call each of you individually. Again, your response is yes to approve it, no to reject it, or abstain. So Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted? Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. The motion passes 7-0-0. Okay, moving on to our next action item.
Move to approve the FY 2021 Southwick, Talon, and Granville Regional School District Assessment Ratios to the Member Towns as follows. Operating Assessment Ratios to Southwick: 84 and 43 hundredths percent; Talon: 3 and 29 hundredths percent; Granville: 12 and 28 hundredths percent for a total of 100%. Capital ratios: 83 and 11% for Southwick; Talon: 3 and 69 hundredths percent; in Granville: 13 and 20 hundredths percent for a total of 100% recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Pam, any questions?
Um, yes. So could you just remind me again, and I probably ask this question every year, um, but you know what my strengths are.
Lady core at Pam.
Um, so could you just remind me again how frequently these assessment ratios are calculated or recalculated, and I know that there's kind of two different, um, kind of standards for which they're calculated, one for the operating, one for the capital, and could you just remind me and anybody else who's listening and who's new to this, how that works?
Pam, I would be happy to. It wouldn't be a budget approval process if we did not, we did not do this. So the, the, the regional agreement, um, governs how this is, how this is done, uh, although it, really, it's done pretty much the same for, for most regional school districts. The operating assessment ratios are determined based on foundation enrollment, so that, the foundation enrollment are all the students residing in, in the, uh, in their individual towns who are, um, attending a public school, uh, in Ma, in Massachusetts. Um, and it utilizes a five-year rolling average, so the 84.43, and the 3.29, and the 12.28 are adjusted, those figures are adjusted annually, but it's based on the five years, including, so, uh, utilizes the foundation enrollment, which is done on October 1st. So it has the October 1st of 2019, 2018, 2017, 2016, and 2015. And the prorated, or, uh, yeah, the prorated amount that each of those, those three towns has, um, basically for, for the total, total enrollment. So that's a rolling five-year average. Next year, it would be, um, you'd be looking at the October 1 of 2020 and, and the previous four years.
Yes.
So that number changes every, every year. Um, the capital assessment ratios are a blend of the operating assessment ratios and also the, um, US Census data, um, and that, um, so that gets locked in for a five-year period. Again, you, um, the, um, after, after five years, it gets recalculated, the census data may not have changed, but the five-year rolling average, or the five-year average of enrollment by town would have changed. And so it's a, the, a cap, uh, capital assessment ratio is 50% based on the operating assessment ratio, if you will, the enrollment piece, and the other 50% is the town populations and how they relate to each other.
Thank you.
The neck, the next time, I think we're, I think we've got like one more year, maybe two to go before the, uh, capital assessment ratio is adjusted again.
That was my next question. I guess I'm predictable. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chelsea, any questions?
No, we're covered, thank you.
Ted? Jess?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
No questions.
Maria?
I do not have questions.
And I don't either. So again, we're gonna do a roll call vote, when I call your name, just let me know, voting. So Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, so that, that passes 7-0-0.
Move to approve the Southwick, Talon, and Granville Regional School District FY 2021 Budget in the amount of $26,298,086 recommended.
So moved.
Second.
So much in my time to hit a line item.
So much.
Pam, do you have any questions?
No.
Chelsea?
No.
Ted?
No.
Jess?
No, Steve, thank you for the overview of any changes that occurred.
Oh, you're welcome.
Jonathan?
This is on, which item is this on again? This is the...
Total Budget, Operating.
Oh, oh, total, oh, yeah, no questions.
Maria?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions either, so we'll go to a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, for, the action passes at 7-0-0.
Okay, we'll move to the next one. Chairman, who, do you want me to read it out, or, since everybody can see it, how do you want me to proceed? Excuse me?
I would, because we're online tonight.
Oh, okay. Move to approve the FY 2021 Southwick, Talon, and Granville Regional School District Assessment Ratios to the Member Towns as follows. Operating Assessment for Transportation: Southwick: 84 and 43 hundredths percent; $631,500... $535, sorry, my glasses got in the way there. Uh, Talon: 3 and 36 hundredths percent for $24,609. Granville: 12 and 61 hundredths percent for $91,854. Capital Assessment: To Southwick: 83 and 11 hundredths percent for $1,654,798. For Talon: 3 and 69 hundredths percent for $73,471. dollars. For Granville, thirteen and twenty-hundredths percent, for two-hundred-sixty-two thousand, eight-hundred-twenty-four dollars. Minimum contribution for Southwick, nine million, three-hundred-sixty-seven thousand, five-hundred-fifty-three dollars. Talling, four-hundred-twenty-two thousand, eight-hundred-eighty-three dollars. Granville, one million, five-hundred-twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-fifty-three dollars. Discretionary charges to Southwick, appropriation for eighty-four and forty-three hundredths percent, for one-hundred-sixty-five thousand, thirty-nine dollars. Talling, three and twenty-nine hundredths percent, for six thousand, four-hundred-thirty-one dollars. In Granville, for twelve and twenty-eight hundredths percent, for twenty-four thousand, four dollars. Non-discretionary to Southwick, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, zero to Talling, zero to Granville. For a total assessment to Southwick, for eleven million, eight-hundred-thirty thousand, nine-hundred-twenty-five dollars. For Talling, in the amount of five-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, three-hundred-ninety-five dollars. In Granville, in the amount of one million, nine-hundred-seven thousand, nine-hundred-thirty-six dollars recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Pam, any questions?
Yes. So I'm looking at the second column, the percentage column, and I'm looking at the, okay.
I'm looking at it too.
You know what I'm going to ask. So what, I don't understand why that is a twelve-point-six-one percent instead of a twelve-point-two-eight percent.
It should, it should not be. The twelve-point-two-eight is the correct rate. So it's, I believe it just didn't get changed on the, on that upper, on the transportation operating assessment. So the actual, the actual percentage rate used to come up with the ninety-one-eight-fifty-four was the twelve-point-two-eight percent. But I had to edit the figures in the column. So there's no math involved in, or in this, in this slide. So it was...
So that ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four is twelve-point-two?
Twelve-point-two-eight percent.
Of what?
Of the total non-discretionary transportation cost. So bear with me just a moment.
Where is that number, so that I can verify that math?
Then all the percentages don't add up to one hundred?
I think Talling should be three-point-two-nine percent.
Right.
Does the budget summary help, or do you want me to go back to the other, to the action item?
No. No, hang on for a sec. If you go back to that, Amy, to the, to the, to the motion.
Okay. Should be eighty-four and forty-three hundredths, three and twenty-nine hundredths for Talling, and twelve and twenty-eight hundredths for Granville.
Right. But the, I just want to make sure that the dollar amounts in the next column correctly reflect the correct percentages.
It, it does. So I just took the, so the, the, and you guys don't have this in front of you right now, but the, the net transportation cost after, after reducing the total by regional, anticipated regional transportation reimbursement of nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand would be seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars. If I take seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars and multiply that times the twelve-point-two-eight percent, which is the accurate number, you get ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars. So my apologies, I did not change the, the percentages in that transportation assessment as it reads on the motion for Talling and Granville.
So do we amend the motion?
I think we should, to accurately reflect the three-point-two-nine percent and the twelve-point-two-eight percent.
So let's put a pin in the questions for a moment. And I'm going to entertain a motion to make adjustments to the operational transportation percentages to reflect eighty-four-point-four-three for Southwick, three-point-two-nine for Talling, and twelve-point-two-eight for Granville.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, we'll do a quick roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Well, the, the action item has been adjusted accordingly.
And I just verified Talling's calculation as well, and it really is utilizing a three-point-two-nine percent proportion.
So we're back to questions. Where were at Pam?
I'm good now. Thank you.
Okay, Chelsea?
All set. Thank you.
Ted?
Just my annual, you know, pointing out that Talling gets, you know, I won't say, well, let me put it this way. We, we would rather have a different proportion.
I wish I could.
Minimum contribution, you know, goes against us.
You're talking about the minimum contribution?
Yeah. No, don't, it's, it's just my annual venting, that the formula is not correct. There's nothing we can do about it.
On our district side, from the state appropriation.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, Jess, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Jonathan?
Nope.
Maria?
No questions.
And Jeff, I don't have any questions. So we're going to move to, we're doing a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Action item passes 7-0-0.
My apologies for, for that typo.
Well, I'm glad that we caught it, that's all. And that the percentages were fine.
Yes, thank you.
You're allowed one mistake a year, and that was it.
The typo is a good one to make. Move to approve the authorization to incur debt by the issuance and sale of bonds or notes up to the amount of three-hundred-seventy-five thousand for the purchase of all items specified in the STG-RSD-FY 2021 Capital Improvement Plan as follows. Technology, seventy-five thousand dollars for network infrastructure equipment, including but not limited to storage server or servers and optical network terminals. Building improvements, seventy-five thousand dollars to replace the domestic water heaters at Powdermill School Gym Area, twenty thousand dollars. Install supplemental heating in the main entry vestibule at Southwick Regional School for thirty thousand. Gymnasium renovations at Southwick Regional School to include the gym floor and audio control system, twenty-five thousand. Building furniture fixtures and equipment, fifteen thousand. Walk-off matting systems for all schools and grounds equipment in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for field maintenance equipment package. Ground improvements, a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. Want to replace the front sidewalk at Woodland School Main Entry and install new paving at Powdermill Road Parking Lot, a hundred-and-fifty thousand. Excuse me, to replace the front sidewalk at Woodland School Main Entry was forty thousand dollars. Recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, questions? Pam?
So I know we talked about all or most of these before, but for those that may not be present for those conversations, could you just explain what the walk-off matting systems are and what the field maintenance equipment package is?
Sure. The field maintenance equipment is essentially various apparatus that would be attached to the tractor system, one of the tractors that we run, for things like aeration, some, find, I've got one, something with a little more detail. Bear with me just a moment.
But basically attachment to the tractor to help us maintain our athletic fields, yes?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Cedar, spreader, aerator, brush.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. And the walk-off matting systems?
Yeah. So the walk-off matting system, in order to properly maintain and to preserve the life of the floors throughout the buildings, particularly at the lower grades where students are going out for recess and, you know, tracking in mud, snow, sand, you name it, these walk-off matting systems, keeping them in good condition or having, replacing them every so often, helps to preserve the life of the, the flooring, floor tile throughout the building. So it's recommended by facilities personnel to, to maintain those in good working condition to avoid costly floor replacement or premature floor replacements.
And are these things that we currently have in place that we are simply replacing because of wear and tear, or is this new for us?
Yeah, I believe it's a combination of replacing existing and, and adding or extending the length of some of the matting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In regards to the walk-off matting, I think that some people could read this line item as welcome mats equalling fifteen grand. So how can, how do they add up to fifteen thousand dollars worth of mats? Just, I feel like they're a little more than just welcome mats, is all.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're fairly rugged, and they're specifically designed to trap and, and collect all this material that comes in off the students. And, and they're, they can be rather large as well. So extending for many feet, not just a typical welcome mat where it might be, you know, eight by ten or something like that. I mean, these, these can run for twenty, thirty, thirty feet in length. I can get specific information, some, some dimensions from Mr. Wykander, which I'd be happy to share with you, but also make it available for the annual town meetings so that the residents who are being asked to approve our borrowing authorization would have a better handle on exactly what it is they're, they're approving.
Yeah, maybe even just knowing how much one costs can help us quantify it. It just seems like a lot, even though it's only, yeah, for something that...
Right. It, there are numerous entrances and exits. The entrances are what we're worried about, but throughout, throughout each building, more, more than you typically think of. So this isn't just for the main entry, but other entry, points of entry that students come through when they're returning to their classrooms from recess, or...
Yeah.
Even sometimes when they're showing up in, in the morning, they come through different, different points.
Thank you.
We can definitely do that, get some, some additional details.
Ted, any questions?
I had one more thing while we're waiting for Ted to reply, but I had asked this question already, just, and Steve answered it, but it was about the heating in the vestibule and just that it's not just heating for a vestibule for people to stand in and wait for their cars to pick them up, but it's really important because there is sprinkler systems, so water pipes running through that area, and it would be terrible, costly, time-wise, so disruptive if any of that froze. So I just wanted to share that, too.
Correct.
Ted, do you have any questions?
No.
Jess, do you have any questions?
Yeah, two questions with regards to the ground improvements, a hundred-and-ninety thousand. They're replacing the front sidewalk at Woodland. Was there an opportunity to wrap in that walkway towards the rec center, or not at this time, it was too costly?
We think that there may be some other things we can do from a maintenance standpoint to improve the sidewalk. I believe I know what, what you're referring to. So we did talk about it at, I believe we talked about it at one of the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meetings, and I think we're on the path to maybe try to do something from the operating. It, it wouldn't take a lot to, to maybe fix that to avoid potential injuries.
Okay, great. And then with regards to the Powdermill Road Parking Lot, that's excellent. I know that's been on our list for a few years now, so it's great to see that we're able to get that in there. Just a question with regards to visitors and parents when they come to the school. Is there a way for us to denote that that is overflow parking, parking for Powdermill because of the way the driveway is and how that gate is closed there? I've gotten feedback from parents that there's confusion around, and people end up parking out on 57 versus understanding that that parking lot belongs to Powdermill.
That's a, that is a great suggestion, Jess. I will have the building principal, who I know is on this as an attendee, add that to like her back-to-school letter or something to that effect, so that every new family that comes to Powdermill School knows that that is additional parking. And I'll talk to Eric Wykander about possibly putting a sign up for something that delineates that that is overflow parking.
Yeah, because I'm almost even thinking people who aren't like grandparents or just those sorts of things, people who aren't, wouldn't be part of that school communication if there is that small sign we could put up. I don't know what the cost of that would be, but if we could do that, that'd be great.
Good suggestion.
Any questions?
Was that to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, I think Jess stole my thunder. I think that's all I, you know, I've been, I've been, I've been on that sidewalk thing obviously too. So if, if any of that forty thousand can fix that, that'd be great. But it sounds, I, I don't think the solution there should be too difficult, but just that's the only thing I could think of on here, so.
Okay. Maria?
No, no questions.
Okay. And myself, I just want to add one comment. The paving for the Powdermill Parking Lot, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, we will be coordinating with the town of Southwick to try to bundle some economy of scale when they're doing asphalt work for the town of Southwick at the same time.
So does that one-hundred-and-fifty thousand reflect the effort to bundle, or is it possible that it will cost less than the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
It reflects an assumption that we would be coming under their blanket contract that they do with a paving, paving contractor.
Okay.
Which is what we've, we've done in the, in the past.
Okay.
There's certain, certain assumptions around what the rate would be for asphalt. The fact that the petroleum prices are coming down may signal that the asphalt work could be done a little cheaper, but I think we've got enough capacity in there to cover it.
Is that, is that, this, I assume, obviously gets scheduled once the fiscal year flips around, but this is going to be, I'm guessing, scheduled for August, July, somewhere in there if it can. Is it before school starts, or what's the, is there any timeframe?
The, the plan would be for it to be a summer of 2020 project, assuming we come out of the annual town meeting with authorization to, to borrow. Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's no issues there with getting that done before the school year would start and what problems that might cause.
Right. That's, that's our window to get it done.
Yeah.
If, if for some reason we, we fail on that, the next opportunity is probably the April vacation week. And if that, for whatever reason, it's delayed beyond that, the Um, and if that, for whatever reason it's delayed beyond that, the following, uh, summer or, uh, summer of twenty twenty one, um, these, this borrowing authorization extends from year to year. So if, if we for some reason can't get it done in FY twenty one, we could do it in the early part of FY twenty two. I'm not anticipating that would be necessary, but that's an option.
Okay, moving on to our roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, so the action item passes seven zero zero.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, read the action item and then I just want to, uh, let the school committee know about the feedback that we received regarding the Student Opportunity Act. So I'm going to move to approve the Southwick, Talling, Granville Regional Schools Student Opportunity Act, school year twenty twenty one, school year twenty twenty three, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
So I do want to let you know that we, uh, did post, uh, for parent feedback and we had office hours for feedback. We did have, uh, one parent come in during the office hours and, uh, her suggestion, uh, was in line. She said, I was going to come in and talk to you about, um, uh, tier one core reading program. So she was happy to see that that was on our, uh, on our SOA. Another parent, um, provided feedback, um, where I think she's in a school district that, um, uses the long form because a lot of her questions were very specific and I think they had a lot more money to write their student opportunity plan around. She was mentioning where's our increased staffing. She was asking where a mention was about increasing stipends for extra teachers and staff efforts for clubs and intramural sports. Um, we get forty two thousand dollars from the state, so our Student Opportunity Act, we had to complete the short form. So I'm going to pass the suggestion on. All of these, although they don't make it into our Student Opportunity Act, a lot of the feedback that we, we received from the parents about, uh, families and opportunities to engage families, we're going to be sharing with the administrative team. Another parent suggested, um, it, it's part of one of the things that we could have filled in, uh, was full day pre K for those going to kindergarten in the following fall and about more social emotional support at, uh, the Woodland School. Um, we did cover the social emotional support in this year's, uh, budget. Um, and we didn't go with a full day pre K for those going to kindergarten because our, um, Student Opportunity Act money, the forty two thousand dollars, um, doesn't support, uh, such a position right now. And, but we are taking that feedback and something that we can look into. Another piece of feedback that we received, um, was looking at a special ed program for social emotional learning and specific learning disabilities. Um, I have a program similar to Agalom's, again, um, doesn't quite meet the Student Opportunity Act, but it's good feedback and I gave this feedback to Dwell Summers. And we received other various feedback, um, not in, um, with anything to do with the, uh, Student Opportunity Act, but I thank the parents for giving us their feedback about snacks and, um, questions about our bathrooms and, um, any feedback we get is always good feedback and we can always do better. So we thank all of the parents who provided us, uh, feedback on the Student Opportunity Act. Uh, at the end, we kept the Student Opportunity Act the way it was drafted and presented to you by Jenny Sullivan. Uh, but the other feedback we are taking and we are, um, presenting it to our administrative team. So we thank all our parents who provided us the feedback on this.
Thank you. Uh, question then, Pam?
No, thank you.
Chelsea?
Um, no questions, but I'm really excited about what was decided, just like that other parent who came in wondering about tier one instruction and reading. That was one of my, um, biggest things that I was looking to see happen and develop. And so I'm really, really excited to see it included in this plan.
Chelsea?
Ted?
No questions.
Jess?
No questions.
Jonathan?
No, no questions.
Maria?
Uh, just, uh, just one quick question, Jen. Um, the parents that came to see you, they sent you messages, do they, did you acknowledge, say thank, thank you to them for their?
We are, I like to do handwritten cards and with the COVID nineteen, I actually have not had an opportunity to do that. So I will be doing that as soon as things settle down, but yes, Maria.
Okay, no, no worries then, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no questions, so moving on to a roll call vote, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff is yes, action item passes seven zero zero. Okay, moving on to reports, Superintendent Willard?
Just that I am trying to keep everybody, the community, our teachers, our staff, um, as up to date as possible with the, um, information that we're getting at the state level. I will continue to, uh, report out using our Blackboard Connect system. And, uh, we had an administrative meeting on Monday and we are trying to keep communication, um, open between the schools and the families and our principals will be sending out a Monday memo to all families about the week's events and what is going on. And we're also going to be, um, holding some office hours at our preschools that will be, uh, stated. So if parents have specific questions, um, related to their children at a specific school, they will know what time they could actually reach out to the principal and the, the principals will be there to answer their questions.
Anything else?
That is all I have at this time.
Director of Finance and Operations?
I think I've said enough for one evening.
Can I get that on record? Okay, moving on to our subcommittees and liaisons.
Um, wait a minute, I had a, I actually did have a question for Steve. So can we go back to, um, Director of Finance and Operation report?
Sure.
Um, so Steve, I very much appreciate the adjusted budget summary and explanations that you sent to us. Um, however, I did have a couple of questions and I was wondering if it was okay if I could ask if you could clarify on the revenue end, those, some of those adjustments?
Okay, I will, I will try to give you a satisfactory, uh, answer.
Okay, um, so the first one is the Medicaid reimbursement. Um, the decrease of forty thousand dollars based on recommendation of claims processing agent and then in parentheses you had LPV EC. Can you, um, just explain what that is for me?
Sure, um, for certain services that we provide to, uh, special education students, uh, services that are considered medically necessary, uh, and fit the definition that the Medicaid, uh, federal Medicaid program, um, puts on them, we are eligible for reimbursement under the Medicaid program. Uh, school districts across the country, uh, do this in Massachusetts. Um, much of it is handled, the, the actual processing, uh, is handled through, uh, UMass Medical. However, uh, school districts usually, um, virtually all, all school districts utilize a, uh, basically a, uh, an agent to help them prepare claims for submittal to UMass Medical, which then files with the, uh, federal government on our behalf. So, uh, many school districts, and I don't know if Anna is still on the call, she can speak to this a lot better than I can, but the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative has been providing for many years those, um, claims, uh, processing or claims, uh, compilation services for not only the districts in the collaborative, but to, I believe it's literally dozens of other districts, um, in Western Mass and possibly even around, around the state. There are, um, a number of organizations that, that do this, uh, not a huge number, but there, there are some. And, uh, we've been using the collaborative service since long before I, I arrived on the scene. Um, there's some real challenges presently with the claim filing process based on some changes that were made and, and some review that was done about how Massachusetts is filing, has been filing its claims, so that's the reason for the need to reduce the estimated revenue.
Okay, all right. Um, and then under local tuition, um, that amount, although peanuts, uh, is doubled. Um, so local nu- um, tu- tuition of what?
It's the, uh, pre K tuition, so for the peer partner students.
Got it, okay. And then am I correct that those fee charges are those athletic fees that we approved at a previous meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I, I knew what all those numbers were. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I actually had a couple items for Jen, not to make this meeting go backwards. I don't know if this is the right time or if I should wait or what, but I just had a, two or three things. Is, is now good or do we wait till we get to other discussions?
I think it would come under all business or new business, but.
Okay, that's fine. Yep, that's fine, we can do it then.
Okay, moving on to subcommittees and liaisons. Negotiations have kind of been on hold, correct, Jen?
Yes. Um, we did have an initial meeting with, uh, our clerical staff.
Okay.
Before we went on, um, our extended school closure.
Uh, Finance Subcommittee?
Chad, do you want to speak to that or?
Um, go ahead, Steve.
Well, it's just, we, we had a meeting scheduled for last Thursday, I think it was, and, um, based on everything that was happening, uh, with the COVID nineteen response, we weren't able to, to main, to, uh, keep that meeting, so it was canceled.
So we're just gonna meet in our next regularly scheduled meeting?
I think so, unless there's some, some reason to, uh, fast track something.
LPV EC Board of Directors, Pam?
No, no, um, obviously all meetings have been, um, suspended until further notice, so I do have nothing to report. Um, I'm not sure how this is going to affect our search for a new executive director.
And Board of Governors for LPVC, same, same message, we have not met. We last met. Senate Policy Subcommittee?
We haven't met, but I'm wondering if we can utilize this as a way to meet and get some things done? Is that possible?
Yeah.
I can do it.
Yeah, I will, I'll set up sometimes, I think, uh, everybody has more availability. I'll be in touch with Chelsea and John and also Maria. We'll see if, uh, um, if we can get everybody on his. I'm, I'm still working, um, so it's very difficult. I mean, if it's at, after four thirty, I might be able to make there, because I'm working from home, but, um, I can't log out until after four thirty.
Okay. Okay.
Totally fine, yeah, whatever we need to do.
Yeah. Okay, we'll set some up.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds, we have not met since our last meeting. Transportation, I don't think you guys have met again.
Nope.
Uh, ILT, I do not believe you guys have met.
No.
Anything on the two fifty, Chelsea?
Everything has come to a standstill. Um, I'm just hoping everything will let you know once we can, yeah, stop social distancing.
Okay, at this time, it's time for our second public comment. And I'll remind folks that, um, you can make comments electronically through the live stream platform and we will read your comments aloud. Um, or you can send a note to the superintendent email. Amy, what do you see?
Okay, I do. Uh, I have a public comment via email from Nicole Burnt of Grammy Road in Granville, the Granville Select Board.
Okay, you gonna read it?
Yes. Can you guys hear me if I'm this far away?
Yeah.
Okay, she's, her email says, this is a travesty. I wanted to make a public comment before you voted under the cover of darkness, all while the town of Southwick is currently in another meeting. However, I only had access as a call in on my cell phone, which apparently means I didn't get the opportunity to comment. Ridiculous that I'm having to try to hammer out an email in the matter of a minute. Shame on you, all of you. It doesn't matter that there are no, there are not other districts going through this. Good grief, that's a child's argument. This pandemic should further illustrate our point of losing our control and flexibility of maintaining our own transportation. There is no reason to be pulling the trigger on this right now, especially considering what is going on in the world right now, as there is no savings and actually a price increase. We were hammered over the head by you all and getting us to approve your capital budgets these last few years because it was so important that we were in the unique position to be providing our own transportation because it allowed us to have the flexibility and being able to affordably run sports and field trips. What happened to that, Mr. Presnal and Ms. Willard? Now, all of a sudden, the party line is, well, no one else is doing it. But alas, I don't know why I'm wasting my breath and my fingers ferociously typing this to you all. I will instead be using my voice loudly to speak to our neighbors in Southwick and Talling and continue to expose what goes on downhill to my Granville constituents. Again, the manner in which you have gone about this is a complete travesty. Good luck at the town meetings and in your next election, you're all going to need it. That concludes the comment.
Looks like, uh, looks like someone had a comment through the chat.
Okay. Okay. Um, uh, the chat comment is, this is Kara Welch, the librarian at Woodland School. In light of our school closures due to COVID nineteen, I think it has to be said, thank you to Superintendent Willard, Amy McLaughlin, Principal Kim Sasso, administrators and coaches, and especially my coworkers at Woodland School. We have learned how to educate and collaborate in ways we never imagined. Communication and expectations have been outstanding. Although we are physically apart, we are stronger together. I hope everyone stays strong and healthy. Oh, I have a new message, hold on. Oh, Chelsea Berry was kicked out and she's back.
Welcome back, Chelsea.
I also have a comment from Jenny Sullivan, uh, the Director of Curriculum Instruction. She stated she really appreciated being able to attend this meeting remotely. She was able to hear everyone and it was nice to be able to be home and multitasking as an attendee. This option would be nice even after social distancing is.
This option would be nice even after social distancing is. Okay, and I think, if you check and see. I don't have any other questions. There's nothing else listed in the chat.
It's the top of the hour, should I mute myself?
I don't have any new emails in the superintendent email account.
Shut door.
Yeah, I'm going to temporarily mute myself right now.
Okay, I do not have any additional emails, Chairman Hall.
Okay. Moving on to community discussion, any old business? Any new business?
So I, I've got just a, a few items that just I wanted to see if there's any clarification. I most, I expect there probably isn't. So these are mostly directed to, to Jen. The first thing I wanted to say is to echo the point that was made there. I really have been really pleased with how well the teachers have done to, to reach out and, and make it known that they're still there and that they're here to support and here to give, give the kids as much as they can. You know, we're all trying to figure this out. But yeah, I've been really, really pleased with the amount of communication that we've got and the amount of, the amount of reach out. So I just want to make sure that that was, that I said that again.
Thank you for that because they are a pretty amazing group of teachers and administrators and that's nice for you to shout out about like that. Thank you.
And, and this has been really tough on teachers. So we appreciate that.
It has.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if I was a teacher, I may have, you know, disappeared for a few weeks. I'm not sure. But they haven't and it's been appreciated. Certainly they haven't, they've made known how to get ahold of them and, and how to, you know, ask questions and such. So it's been, it's been really good. I was curious about the, the, as far as the cleaning the school goes, have we done anything or been given any guidance from the state about what we should be doing, assuming we end up going back to school at some point about what we should do differently? In, as far as cleaning, or is there some process that we should go through or something different than we're already doing?
We are, we are following the CDC guidelines and Steve jumped on in with Buildings and Grounds. But we, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds has been in daily. As our, our custodians were all in last week, we are now on a rotating staff with our custodians. All of the schools, we did a really deep clean and all the school buildings. We are limited to the areas that we are in right now, for those of us who are in the school. As soon as we leave an area of the school, we have to let the custodial staff know and they go back in and they re-clean it. So the schools are pretty much shut down after the first major clean and they are following the CDC guidelines on how to clean public schools. Steve, anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, no, I think you, I think you said it all, Jen. They're also, the Massachusetts Facility Administrators Association shares information, you know, best practices from district to district. So I know Mr. Wykander participates with that group and has been, been very active. The disinfecting, disinfection process, particular products that he's been able to access took place last week. Where it goes from there kind of remains to be seen as to when, when we anticipate being back in, into the schools.
And, and the last, thanks for that, thank you for that, that update. It's good to, it's good to know that information. And I'm sure that the, that's been a lot of work for them to go through and do that stuff. So it's certainly appreciated. The, the last thing, and I don't know that there's, there's most likely not an answer for this, but have we been given any guidance by the Commissioner of Education as to when this three-week period ends, will we be given, you know, maybe a week's notice? Maybe if the school's going to go back or is this really, we're going to run this up to the wire and just kind of see? I mean, I assume we're just waiting this out at this point, right?
I, we have contact with the commissioner and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and the Massachusetts Superintendent's List serve has been extremely active. We are anticipating getting information sooner rather than later by the, on the state level. But I have no, nothing definitive to give you on that. I also want to just give a shout out to our food service staff, along with our custodians, our food service. We, we are not a summer school feeding site and our food service jumped on board the Monday that we returned. And we were up and serving our three communities of Southwick, Tollin and Granville by Wednesday. And as of today, we serve 104 students today. That was the most we've served so far. So I just want to give kudos to them. The managers, the assistant managers, Deb Dunn, Matt Lillabridge, they have come in and just fed our community. So thank you very much to them.
Thank you.
I have two questions. This is Jess. Do we have any concerns around our special ed students during this time?
We are following our commissioner's guidelines, which is to review and enrich. And we, we are receiving guidance about what we can and cannot do. I do know that our teachers who service our students on IEPs are working closely with our classroom teachers and reach out to students as well.
Okay, thank you. And then Jen, this is probably for you and Jenny, if Jenny's still on. But do we have any concerns around how we're going to make up the curriculum?
We, I anticipate getting guidance from the state on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question in regards to cleaning and our wonderful powder mill playground that everyone loves so much. I've heard that it's still being frequented during this time of social distancing mandated. Is there a way for us to close it off at this point or, I don't know, or are we, actually, we probably don't need to worry about sanitizing it at some point?
I had a meeting today with the supervisor of Building and Grounds and we are putting a sign that says, due to the social distancing practices, um, the playground is closed. I don't know if you put the sign up or not. We are keeping the trap open. We just expect people to practice safe social distancing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other new business?
I'm also really thankful for the, the meals and being able to provide 100 kids in our small district food. I think that really is amazing. Thank you for everybody, for all of that. That's it.
We will definitely pass that on.
I'd also like to pass along a shout out to the coaches who really quickly put some very strong instructional material together allowing teachers time to then put their own enrichment materials together. Not all districts are fortunate enough to have the, the coaches who did this work. And we here in Southwick-Tollan-Grandville were very fortunate and the teachers benefited tremendously from this reduction in immediate burden.
I will definitely relay that message and we are getting a lot of feedback from our teachers, thanking them as well.
Good.
There isn't any more new business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. Back end.
Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
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 Jonathan?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And Jeff, yes. Thank you all for making the adjustments this evening and I appreciate those that have tuned in. More folks online that never participated in any of our meetings recently. So thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Stay healthy. Thank you.
This was fun.